Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Wister City Council. It's being held this Monday, November 20th, 2023. We're in council chambers and being streamed live on YouTube. It's after 7:30 PM. Next meeting will be Monday, December 4th, 2023. Ms. Hamilton, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Ms. Knappich.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Reynolds.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
We have a full complement of councils, so definitely have a quorum. At this time, I would ask you to stand and join the city council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
All Pledge of Allegiance, certified by the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And the first official item of business is the approval of the minutes of the November 6th, 2023 meeting. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion approved by Ms. Warden. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. All in favor of approval of the minutes of November 6th, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And the minutes of November 6th, 2023 have been approved. Mayor, well, hopefully you were a good boy since you were visited by Santa Claus on Friday.
There you go. Well, I sure have tried to be. I hope I'm succeeding in that a little bit, so. Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. And council members, good evening to all, and I hope you all got a chance to enjoy the Window Wonderland last Friday in our downtown. Santa did make another perfect landing with some help from our Worcester Fire team, and the weather cleared out just in time for a great evening. Thanks to everyone who helped make it a wonderful event for our city. Lots of volunteers make that happen, and we truly appreciate it. You should all have at your seats tonight a list of citizens willing to help us by serving on a compensation committee for 2023. This is a charter requirement in Section 2.03, Compensation and Bonds, stating that every four years, we make sure that compensation for elected officials is reviewed and kept current with the times. We're asking city council that this group of volunteers be approved for the compensation committee. We should be getting some funding from the state disaster relief program to help with the cleanup cost of the deratio that blew through this past summer. Andre calculated the total cleanup costs of the city were $26,934.94, so we're hoping that this money will be returned to us through the disaster relief program. Tonight is one of the most important city council meetings of the year, the presentation of the city's appropriation budget for 2024. You should all have received the light green folder at your seats, and this has the 2024 budget throughout the whole binder itself. We are going to talk about this real briefly tonight, but more in-depth at a committee meeting before next council meeting. Some highlights that I pulled out of the budget, we have presented a balanced budget on the format of revenues plus surplus balances from 2023 equal expenditures. The government type, all fund appropriation forecast, an increase of $9,547,44 or a 2.8% over the 2023 appropriations. So it shows that we are growing and needing those funds to keep our city moving forward. Full-time employees in '22, we show 195 city employees. In 2023, we had 200 employees, and projected for '24, we're going to add possibly two more employees to a total of 202. And in the budget, is the start of a new pool complex for Christmas Run Park is included in this budget. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Andre and Joel for any comments they might have that they want to share with council before we start really diving into the budget. Gentlemen, Joel, Andre.
Captain, the only thing I would like to say, though, is regarding that storm event we had, Matt Probst, Kurt Denny, he spent three hours worth of his time pulling together some information, and I spent about half hour, so it's a pretty good return on investment, three and a half hours, 27 grand. Do that every day. So anyway, my thanks to Kurt Denny for all his efforts in that. And Ollie, Captain, here's our Joel to talk about the budget.
The only thing I would point out, and you'll see, it's another significant capital year. A lot of that has to do with just a few large projects. For instance, the Oak Hill Mill Town, both the roads and that intersection, now that's over $5 million, but that, you know, the debt service will be repaid by TIF funds, so it is a large expenditure, but there is a dedicated refunding source. Bob mentioned Christmas Run Pool, that's a big one we've been talking about for years, so that's in there, that's something I'm sure we'll have a lot of discussion about. That's another one, it's over $5 million, so it only takes a couple to really bump up the capital there. There are several also in the sewer fund that we've been talking about for the last couple of years, and you'll see phases in the 10-year plan, and those right now are eligible, as far as we can tell, for a 30% grant reimbursement when they're done, and so that's why you'll see those in there phased in, to try to take advantage of that grant that's through the IRA, I think it was the Infrastructure.
Inflation Reduction Act.
Inflation Reduction Act that was passed about a year ago. I just wanted to point those out, and then, like Andre said, we'll present things in more detail at the next meeting.
Did you want to mention aggregation?
Yes. Aggregation. So Amy, I think, had sent some notices to everybody. Back in May, I sent a sort of list of steps that we needed to do, both pre and post-ballot measure, so we're post-ballot measure at this point. And so we need to schedule two public hearings, so we've scheduled those for noon on the 18th and at, I think, 5:00 on the 18th.
It was 6:00.
6:00 o'clock on the 18th. And our consultant here from Palmer Energy and OML will be here to do that, those are required by law. The other thing we'll be doing at the same time is preparing what's called an aggregation governance plan, so that'll be presented to council at a later date to approve. Just basically says, most of the stuff we've already talked about, here's how the plan works, here's how you get notices, those kinds of things. Once that's all done, then we will make the application to PUCO for certification, and then, once that's done, then that's when we can start soliciting RFPs for that. So it'll be a four-month process probably before we're all done, but I just wanted to let you know that. And we are going to put out some notices on social media and our website everywhere we can, because we are aware that since this passage, there's been several people both making mailings and knocking on people's doors. I know at least one showed up at your door, Mr. Reynolds, somebody showed up at the mayor's door, and we're aware of at least one other, two others that showed up at people's doors. Some of them may be legitimate, just simply trying to get people to sign up for a contract, because once they're in a contract, then they will not be put into the aggregation program. Some of them may be people trying to scam our, you know, our citizens, so part of what we're going to put out there is, nobody from the city as part of the aggregation will be going door to door. We'll make sure that people are very aware. Any documentation they get in the mail, you know, will have the City of Wister's letterhead, OML, and Palmer Energy only. That's the only entities that will be on that letterhead when that goes out. So I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that in case anybody else had been solicited at this point.
All right, thank you, Joel and Andre. Well, council, I know that we have a lengthy agenda this evening. We look forward to discussions and will help with information wherever possible. So with that, President Biden-Dyke, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, and I'm glad you're going to get more than called this Christmas, Mayor. Before I forget, I think that now's an appropriate time is to approve the compensation committee. Typically, we do this submitting the complete slate for a vote, which I will propose doing unless someone is vehemently opposed to a person on this list, and then we'll take them one by one, so if I see.
Make a motion to approve the list as presented.
Okay. Motion to approve the list as presented by Mr. Myers, is there a second?
Second.
That being seconded by John Ansel. And let me just read them over real quick, and then we'll have a vote. Jennifer Schatzler, Mark Gooch, Greg Long, Susan Buckwarter, Cody Austin, Don Ackerman, and Andy Michael. I think that's sufficient for the record. Any further discussion? Seeing none, then those in favor of approving the slate of compensation commission members, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And the slate of commission folks have been approved. Thank you, Mayor and administration, for putting that together. We have one individual who would like to speak here at the public portion of the meeting with regard to the legislation on the CRA. It's Mr. Jason Carrick. And Mr. Carrick, if you would come, state your name and address and why you're here.
Yeah, Jason Carrick. My address is 2905 McQuay Road in Worcester. I'm here for the tabled item, the retail project on 585 and the CRA application. I'm really here for two reasons today. Luke Palmer spoke about it in great detail, Justin spoke about it, so I'd want to beat a horse, but a couple of reasons I'm here. I'll answer any questions that anybody may have, and there's a couple rumors that I just want to make sure that I clear up. And so this is an additional retail project for myself. It would not mean the abandonment of anything that I currently have. I own the clothing warehouse, everything surplus in Dollar One in the Portage Square Plaza, and I would not be abandoning that plaza with those stores. So this is just an additional retail outlet for myself. And the second thing, there was an email that asked Craig Sanders to recuse himself from a vote today because of his employment with Freeman Construction. And so this is my project, I'm the one that's investing $5 million personally, it's my money, and it's my project. I've never spoken with Freeman Construction about the project, I've not spoken with Dan or Craig, I don't have any sort of written contract, there's no verbal promise. I just want to make sure that's publicly known, that I've not agreed to do this building with any builder, I actually haven't spoken with anybody, and I've made no promises on who's doing the construction. But I'd be happy to answer any questions over the project. Yeah, Barb?
Thank you. I just want to know what you plan to do with the spaces that are now currently everything surplus and the clothing warehouse. What do you plan to put in there, and how soon would you do that?
So my everything surplus store is about a 15,000-square-foot store, and we are so busy every day, it's very hard for customers to even get down the aisles, because so many customers come to shop the store, and it's hard for us to be able to restock that store fast enough. So the new project would be a 50,000-square-foot building, so that's going to triple the retail space, it will allow us to accommodate more shoppers and have more merchandise out. The current everything surplus spot would turn into a food-only store. It will be a discount grocery in some sort of either a descending price model like the Dollar One store, or it'll be like kind of a fill-a-bag type thing where we can sell grocery product through it. The clothing warehouse would remain the same, and Dollar One would remain the same.
Thank you. And how soon do you think you'd be able to do that after you get the new place set up?
I would get the new place however long construction takes, and getting that one open, so I would kind of still have both locations, and then I would sell down the inventory at the surplus store. It would require closing that store for probably one week just to redo fixtures and then immediately relaunch it as a food.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carrick, how many receiving bays would you have, or shipping bays, docks, whatever they're called, at the new facility?
One.
Just one? And then approximately how many parking spaces are you planning for there?
Whatever the city requirement is, I think it's around 120.
Okay.
I assume you have some sort of, I'll use this word that Mr. Ansel likes, matrices that show where your customers come from?
We can judge it based on credit card sales, so a cash sale, we don't have any data of, you know, where that customer lives or where they come from, but credit card sales, we can monitor where their zip codes are located to figure out where the traffic comes from. About 80% of our shoppers live outside of Worcester, and really, the majority of them are outside of Wayne County.
Well, thanks for bringing all those people to town.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no committee reports tonight unless I miss something, but we do have a public hearing. It will be chaired by Mr. Reynolds regarding Noble Drive rezoning. So, Mr. Reynolds, I turn the floor over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a public hearing on a proposed rezoning request. It is on your agenda tonight, you'll see it as item two under new business. It's in connection with an application filed on behalf of Village Network for the rezoning of 10.25 acres of land from I-1, which is an office, limited industrial, to C-1, office We'll start off with asking, first of all, anybody that wants to speak to this tonight at the public hearing, please step to the podium, identify yourself by name and address, and affirm we swear to tell the truth, and I'd ask first if there's anyone here to speak in favor of the proposed rezoning.
My name is Chad Knopp, 5349 Sequest Road, Worcester, Ohio, and I swear to tell the truth. I am representing the Village Network. We are applying for the rezoning, as they packet, I believe, details. We're looking to more fit what our business is in that area with the C-1 versus the I-1. The ultimate goal for us is to start doing some daycare and early childhood-type services, and that would require us to rezone the property. So it's a better fit for us, as well as, I think, we're going to bring some much-needed services, as everybody knows, daycares and early childhood has a very long waitlist. So we're going to partner with some other community members to do that, as far as service providers, so we'll do the mental health component, as well as, you know, enlist some other ones. So it's a pretty exciting opportunity, we think, for the community and a good fit for location. As many of you know, we did acquire the 2020 Noble Drive building, which was vacant for many years, we'll be able to repurpose that, so pretty excited about the project.
Any one of council have questions?
Of course I do. What are you looking at as far as capacity goes?
Right now, we're looking at 30 kids, but that's continuing to grow as more partners come on board. So we're not finalized on all the agreements yet, we're kind of taking it one step at a time. So we have enough interest to continue pursuing, as we are right now, to get the rezoning. Once that's done, we anticipate doing some remodel to the inside of the building, just to accommodate the kids better, because that was the old Noble Tech building, so a lot of it's more set up for conference spaces and stuff like that, not for, you know, infants to five-year-olds. So, you know, we have to do a little remodeling. So it's a step-by-step, so as it's garnering some momentum, that number keeps growing a little bit, but we're at least starting with 30, I know that.
Now, will this be something that's open to the public, or is it for your staff?
Not staff, it would definitely be public.
Excellent. How is the pricing going to be? Would it be low, sliding fees, that kind of thing?
A lot of the, most of the people that need mental health services are typically on some sort of public assistance, so it's going to be very dependent. I don't, I can't speak to that personally, I'm coming from the facility side in all fairness, so I'm representing that side, so I don't have any of the pricing structure or knowledge of it.
Just want to make sure that, I'm sure that the people that you're seeking to serve will not be outpriced.
No, no, definitely not, no.
Thank you.
Yeah, I attended the planning commission meeting, and one of the things that came up that you might be interested in, they have more than enough parking, we won't be adding any parking, so if anything, we might take some of it, make green space, but there's plenty of parking. And the other one is, the request was for C-2 or, yeah, C-3, and so they're going to be required to come back for conditional use under C-1 in order to be doing the daycare and the potentially preschool, so.
I think it's fair to say that there was a little bit of pushback on the C-3, and that the C-1 was more of a compromise that.
Yeah, well, I think the comment was that they didn't, nothing against what their use is going to be, but C-3 allows that if they were to sell the building in the future, other uses, and so it was more of a future concern than it was with regard to the Village Network, I believe.
Correct, and we can make C-1 work, it's just we have to go back for the next step.
And I think this is evident to council, because we have this information in our packages, but for the public, these sites are already developed. This is not a question about building, new buildings, or how they're constructed, it's a question of how those buildings are used.
Correct. Yeah, we have no intent of doing any exterior modifications to the either existing building, anything would be interior only.
The only other thing I'd throw in there is, they go to Planning Commission on November 2nd, and was approved 7/0 at Planning Commission. Anyone else have questions, Mr. Knopp?
Thank you, Chad.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, everyone, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak in favor of the application? Anyone here to speak? Mr. Borman.
Sorry.
And that, don't apologize.
This is really a problem, too. Chad Borman, 1807 Rathburn Road, Worcester, Ohio. I sit on the foundation for the Village Network. We approved the purchase of that building for expansion of childcare, and one of the things I would just say is that it is really meant for those that need it. And so changing this so that we can serve the community for some underprivileged families that are, families are working, trying to bring in some dollars, and have some really, really, really good care for their kids there at little to no cost. I can't give you the statistics, but I can tell you, it's really publicly funded and for the right reasons, so anything we can do for this, and I'll be honest, I don't know all the zoning issues, but I can tell you that we bought it for that purpose, to do the right thing, so appreciate you.
Please sit down. Any questions for Mr. Borman?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speak to the petition, either for or against? I think we've exhausted the fours, anyone opposed? If not, we'll consider this public hearing adjourned.
Okay, well, note on the record that a public hearing I've had on the Noble Drive rezoning. That brings us to unfinished business, and because of communications I've had with Mr. Reynolds, I think since we've had some official business, he's able, if he so desires, to bring forth a motion with regard to bringing the matter that was tabled off the table.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will make a motion to do exactly that. I'd like to move to bring ordinance number 2023-24, which we did table at the last meeting, off the table.
All right, a motion to bring ordinance, is it ordinance?
It's an ordinance.
Ordinance 2023-24 off the table.
Mr. President, before you call for a vote, I will recuse myself of this legislation.
All right. It'll be noted that Mr. Sanders recused himself and is leaving the dais. So a motion has been made to bring ordinance 2023-24 off the table, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the motion to bring ordinance number 2023-24 off the table?
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2023-24 has been brought off the table and will be considered, and we probably have mousetrapped you, but hopefully you have it right there, Ms. Hamilton, that's why you're clerk, and I'm not. You keep much better track than I do. So if you would, please read the title.
Ordinance number 2023-24, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with 585 Partners LLC for community reinvestment area tax incentives.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. We've talked about this, I think, at least the last four meetings, I'm not sure how much we discussed it the last time as far as the merits, but it's been before us now. We've talked to it at length, we've had Mr. Carrick tonight, Mr. Starlin previously, the administration has addressed it before. By way of background, again, this is a request for a tax abatement for 585 Partners LLC for a 50,000-square-foot retail facility on Akron Road. Mr. Carrick described this a little bit tonight. As indicated in the ordinance, the Worcester Growth Corporation reviewed the application and did not vote in favor of it. The Worcester East Coast District has received notice as required by law and did not act upon it one way or the other, and they are not required to. And we've, I think we have kicked this around long enough, and it's, we want to make sure this gets disposed of before the new council has to step in this, so I'm going to make a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 2023-24.
All right, motion to adopt ordinance 2023-24 by Mr. Reynolds, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Discussion, questions? Mr. Carrick said he would be available to answer questions. Ms. Knappich?
I do have some comments and some things I'd like to raise. Speaking as the councilperson at large and also as someone who lives in that direct area, first and foremost, I want to say Jason Carrick is an amazing good for this community in very many ways. I was just in everything surplus this afternoon shopping, and he does a lot of good. My concern with this project is, goes way back to the rezoning of this particular property, which I was concerned about when we rezoned that property, I was the only one who voted no, about what would be put into that area. My concern was basically, was based upon traffic, because if you live in a development on the west side of 585, it's hard enough to get out of that street without additional traffic on 585. In fact, it's almost impossible, and so I was concerned about that. I was concerned, again, about competition with other retail organizations in the area that are similar to Mr. Carrick's business. I was also concerned about what would happen with his properties at Portage Plaza, because as most of you know, that's been my mantra for every time I've been on council, what are we going to do with Portage Plaza to make it look better, to make it be better, to make it not the poor end of retail in the city, quite frankly, and so I had a lot of concerns about it. I also have concerns about the fact that this application was made to jump through more hoops by the city than other applications are. There are a lot of concerns with respect to this whole project, but I will admit that my concerns first and foremost go back to the rezoning, which we were told when the rezoning took place, that the only thing that was going to go in there was a dentist office. And when I raised concerns about, what about traffic for new retail processes, well, that was never going to happen, and here we are, it's happened. But that's water under the bridge. I realize that it's zoned the way it is, and it's zoned the way it is. I realize that it's zoned the way it is and it's zoned the way it is, so the question is the CRA. And my question is, what do we do about the traffic on Five Eighty-Five? And Five Eighty-Five is not a Worcester road, it's a state road, I believe. And so we'll be dumping more traffic onto Five Eighty-Five and you have people coming in from developments from the west side of Five Eighty-Five where, trust me, if you try to get out of any of those developments at three or three-thirty in the afternoon until six-thirty in the afternoon, you can't. There's no such thing as a left turn. It's very difficult. Again, as I said before, my concern was also what's going to happen to Portage Plaza. So those are the things that I'm concerned about with the project, not that I think that it's a bad project, I don't think it's a bad project. As I said, I was just at Everything Surplus and, and the clothing warehouse today, excellent businesses do a wonderful job for Worcester and the surrounding community. My concerns are more for traffic and lighting and some of the other issues that are involved with a substantial retail development right on Five Eighty-Five. When that traffic gets bad, we can't do anything. State's going to have to do something, and I'm, probably am not going to be on city council when all those phone calls come through. And I just want to raise that for the public, and I want to raise it because I think that it's an important issue. The other thing I want to raise is the fact that while I think that a CRA is important for business development, I'm a little concerned about where we're, we're putting competition and how we're putting competition. We've only done CRAs for retail organizations downtown, and I don't know what will happen here. I'm assuming that there are enough votes to pass this, but I just wanted to make sure that I voiced my concerns on both sides of, of, of what is going on here. And I think we have to treat the business owners fairly, we have to treat the residents fairly, we have to treat the community fairly, those are my concerns with the project. I think that it will go forward, I think it will be an excellent project. I hope I can get out of my driveway, I hope I can get out of my road, I hope all the little old people that live on Eastwood can and not get hit. They can hardly do that now, trust me, my mother lives there. But I, you know, those, those are my concerns with the project, and that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Um, I would just like to say, as, yeah, as your Ward Two representative, which is where this project is proposed to go in, I, I agree with a lot of what Ms. Knappick said, and I do understand that traffic is a concern over there, and without a retail project such as this, it's already a concern. I have picked up my niece from the Montessori school and it's just complete chaos over there, so. That being said, I think the phrase is it's better to dance with the devil, you know? And we've rezoned this, right? So we don't know what could go in there, and if Mr. Carrick decides to pull out, which is an absolute possibility, we have, I mean, you've said, I think, in a discussion that you and I had, that maybe a, a restaurant wouldn't be a terrible idea because it'd be convenient over there and it would be really helpful for all of the industry that, that is, that makes up that area, but I can only imagine that traffic would be an even greater nightmare with especially like a fast food restaurant or something. That's just my, my guess, driving down Hamburger Hill, it's not retail, and it's, and it's a lot of traffic. So I just wanted to, to voice that and say that I, I sort of feel, I agree with what you're saying on a lot of levels, but I really think that this project is probably a better fit for that area than some of the other options that could be out there for this zone.
And, and I absolutely understand that. You know, we've had, we have retail there and commercial there, but they're nine to five, and so there's not that constant traffic from eight to, to nine. That's, that's my concern, my concern is the lighting, and I'm sure that if, if necessary, Mr. Carrick will take care of, of that in the parking, but it just, I'm concerned that it's going to make for an extreme, extremely congested area more than it already is, and I absolutely understand better the people that you know than, than you don't know going into this, I, I understand that, and not that I, I don't agree, I'm just voicing my concerns about what could potentially happen. And, but again, that goes back to the zoning portion of it as opposed to the CRA portion of it.
Correct.
And so that's, that's where I stand.
Yeah.
Mr. Myers?
Yeah, that, that would be my comment, the zoning issue's already been voted and approved, so that's not really what's before us tonight, this is a CRA request, so the zoning thing has nothing to do with this applicant. I don't think it's fair to penalize somebody who's before us tonight for a decision that was made in the past. The past zoning for that property would have allowed a twenty-four hour day, seven days a week warehouse with semi trucks at all hours, so I don't know that this is a greater traffic issue than you could have had based on the prior zoning, so if you wanted to go back to the old zoning.
I'd rather have a few semis up and down the road than.
You could have ten an hour. You could have fifty an hour, you don't know. But the zoning issue's been resolved already, previously voted upon by the council. The other couple of issues, the possible retail with the amount of business they bring into town from out of the city and out of the county, really makes it comparable to a non, or to a basic sector, and if Jonathan Malley were here, he would be able to speak more eloquently on behalf of what those, two of those are, basic sector versus non-basic sector. I did look up the definitions, even though this is not considered, retail is not considered a basic sector, the end result is, if they're bringing a lot of business into our community from outside, it acts as a basic sector as far as the revenue is concerned, bringing money into town, has the added benefit that if they come here for this particular store, they may spend money at Lurches or other stores or go to our restaurants, so there's a benefit there. The last thing, the vote and review of the Worcester Growth, I can't find anything in the Ohio Revised Code or any city ordinances that gives them any authority to review CRA applications in the first place, so I don't think that's in, really relevant. Actually, I'd be moving at the first of the year to remove them from that process, because I don't, can't find anything in the law that gives them any reason to review them, so. And I, I gotta say, I'm going to support this tonight, again, I think the fact that it brings a lot of business to town, I do appreciate theirs traffic issues, I've had offices on Five Eighty-Five, basically ten out of the last fifteen years. I have a bigger issue with the shuffle loop people because it's hard to get out of there because of the write-on red that they do, but I, I understand that that's an issue. We might have to address that in the future, too, with turn lanes or whatever we can do.
And how would.
I plan to support it, I appreciate you coming tonight, thank you.
Mr. Reynolds?
The issue I have primarily with this project is certainly not with Mr. Carrick or with Mr. Starlin, I've, again, reiterated everything Ms. Knappick said in support of everything you guys do in the community and very much appreciated and glad to have you here. It goes back to the discussion that Mr. Starlin and I had, I think, two meetings ago or three meetings ago, about whether or not CRA eligibility means eligibility or whether it means entitlement. And Mr. Starlin has advocated the position that if you are eligible, you're entitled to get it, and there should be no questions asked from there out. And I just adamantly oppose to that position. I think it's council's responsibility to exercise their discretion when it comes to us to make that decision. We may not agree with each other all the time, I'm sure there's going to be disagreement on this one, but we're each elected to make that decision as we see appropriate, and I'm not going to, you know, I may disagree with Mr. Myers or Ms. Knappick, but that's their prerogative, it doesn't mean they're wrong or I'm right or vice versa, but that's what we're enlisted to do. So, again, I strongly push back against that idea. I recognize from a developer standpoint, you like to know as fast as possible that it's a done deal, that this money is guaranteed, and for better for worse, when you're working with the government and asking for taxpayer assistance with the project, which is in a way what a tax abatement is, that it's going to take, that it's not automatic, that it's not something that you're just going to stumble into just because you check all the boxes. So with that in mind, you know, I do think it's a matter of discretion, I, you know, Ms. Warden and Mr. Myers, I think, have voiced their opinion as to where they stand on this one, and, and I respect that, but for my own reasons, and again, nothing to do with Mr. Carrick or Mr. Starlin, you know, I'm going to vote against this one. It's a greenfield project, which means this is undeveloped space, and I, Mr. Carrick says that if he does not have this, he will not build this project, and I absolutely believe him on that, no reason to doubt him on that, and, you know, I'd be disappointed to lose this, but by the same token, there will be someone else that comes along with another project, and Ms. Warden makes a good point, yet we don't know who that person might be, but again, going back to the entitlement thing, I suppose if you take Mr. Starlin's argument, if it is a restaurant, we're prepared to give them a tax break in order to build and compete against all the other people that are paying all their taxes, and that's, I'm not prepared to go down that road. So that's, I guess, my two cents on this, we've talked around, around this, and I don't want to, again, Mr. Carrick, I think, has talked about beating a dead horse, and I, I can be accused of doing the same thing, but that's, that's where I am on this one.
Anyone else? Seeing then, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
No.
Mr. Cavan?
No.
Ms. Knappick?
No.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Mr. Biden? So this is only the second time I've ever had to break a tie. I have not weighed in on this, I did sit on, sit on Growth Corp, I was in favor of it then, it met all the requirements. People say, oh, we've never done this in the green space, well, there's a lot of things we haven't done, we never had a door, we now have a door, we never had the CRAs downtown, we have plenty of those now. I look at the money, in one year, that property tax, even with the abatements, go generate ten years' worth of what it is presently bringing in, and people say, well, we might get something else, we might not. In, in ten years, that property is going to bring close to half a million dollars in real estate taxes, in ten years at the present valuation, it is going, would bring in approximately fifty thousand dollars. It meets all the requirements, there's a major investment in, and one of the investment aspects of this that people don't, or it hasn't been discussed much, when you're talking about a five million dollar project, that's going to flow into the community one way or another with regards to the building trade, with regard to contractors, so it's going to have a positive effect. I voted for it in, in the Growth Corp, and tonight I'm going to cast a yes in favor of it. And seeing that, I think that's a five, a four, three, and I appreciate those on the other side, and I certainly understand the traffic issue, but that seems to be a common problem anywhere lately here in Worcester, just going up Burbank Road at certain times is agonizing, it's almost like a trail of tears because you can be stuck at a couple of those lights for, I've been there five minutes, so, and I, so I feel, feel for people, but.
Let me comment, Mr. Biden, Nick, I want to, I see Mr. Jonathan Malley is not here this evening, one of the reasons we tabled it previously was so that he would be here to talk about his side, he did spend a good bit of time telling me his research, I want to just state that a great deal of respect for him and all the work he's done on not only this issue, but all the other applications that he's brought before us, he's very thorough. We, we joked back and forth, he, he explained a lot of good points to me. At the end, we agreed to disagree, but I certainly want to just say that I appreciate the hard work he does in putting the information together on behalf of council to bring to us, so.
All right.
Since he's not here to be able to say his part, so, thank you.
So twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four passes, we'll have a second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six, but we got to get Mr. Sanders to join us again, and the record will reflect that Mr. Sanders has come back from self-isolation and has joined the rest of council. So before I get to Mr. Sanders on ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six, Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title?
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six, an ordinance amending the annual appropriation ordinance.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, as we had discussed two weeks ago related to this ordinance, this is to utilize a portion of the Ohio, or the One Ohio Opioid Settlement Fund to utilize thirty-five thousand dollars to provide some advanced lab panel for our first responders in the city. The advantage to this, this particular program, it will be a one-time program, but what it does is it will be testing for specific items. Oh, well, my apologies.
All right, well. Back up.
Sounded really good.
Yeah, save that for the next one.
Hey, it was, I was on.
You were on a roll, that was excellent.
All right, well, my apologies to all. Yeah, this, this particular, the twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six, thank you, Ms. Hamilton.
She keeps me straight, too.
Yeah, she'll probably keep me straight for a while, so, all right. This is an amount of two hundred thousand dollars to be utilized in an unappropriated balance for the employee benefits fund, and again, as we had discussed two weeks ago related to this, we have had several individuals within the city that at this point have needed to change their healthcare situation, which at this point has allowed, or basically put us in a position where we've needed to spend more money related to this from where we had budgeted last year, and, as you say, at this point, it's, it's not a, it's not a large amount of money, but at this point, it's, it's unnecessary, so from my end, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden, would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Knappick?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
All right, the rules have been suspended, do you have another motion for us?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Any questions? Discussion? My question is, how, how much is this going to jump, since we're looking at the appropriations for next year?
Next year's going to be a lot bigger because we have that year, we're probably looking at fourteen percent increase in 2024, so this year, this year is just a very odd year, in that, number one, we have virtually full employment, normally we don't, so there's some, there's some fluff in there, so we had, that, number one, and number two, for the first time in a total of years, we actually had, we had thirteen people change their, their plans, twelve of those thirteen went from like single or married or, or married, espoused to family, so they all, twelve of thirteen went to more expensive plans, and there's a pretty big difference going from those two, as I think I provided.
Three times.
Yeah, three, so it was, it was the perfect storm, it's, again, never happened in twenty-one years I've been here, but it was just kind of unusual, but that's why. But that's why I would keep 150 days of cash in that fund, you know, as a little cushion to.
Um, I, so where I work, there is, I guess, a preventative measure that I, I can't accept insurance, or my husband can't get insurance through me if he's offered it through his employer. Do we have the same policy in the city?
I think it's, there's, what do they call it, life changing a better, and there's, so there's, in front of a child.
Marriage. Sure, but I mean, but I mean, if your, if your spouse is offered insurance through their employer.
I'll answer your question.
Yeah, if, so, in, in that event, and that your spouse has offered insurance through their employer, then I could stay on his policy or vice versa, but the cost would be all mine? Does that make sense? I'm maybe not describing it exactly.
I think I understand what you're saying, and I don't, I don't believe that's, that 's important. That's critical for mom's. No, no.
You can opt out.
Sure, you can opt out, but there's.
Yeah, I, I understand completely what you're saying, Jen, is that many, in fact, most employers.
Yeah, most.
If you have, if you're married and your spouse has.
Coverage.
Coverage available to them through their insurance, they cannot get on your insurance, and that's something that is becoming more and more prevalent.
What if both people work at places that say that, then you can't get on either one?
Well, no, then I have.
Doesn't make any.
No, I have insurance through. I have insurance through my employer. My husband has it through his.
So you can't get on either of them?
No, each person.
Each person's covered by their.
Can get on their own.
By their primary employer, yeah.
Insurance. But it is, it is a cost-saving measure for employers.
Nor is that the issue before us this evening. We could talk about that at another time. If you'd like to talk about it at another time.
Well, I'm asking the question, and thank you very much for mansplaining it to us, but I'm not asking you, I was asking the administration.
Not the question and answer.
Nope, but we're asking questions about this policy, so, thank you.
And it is a cost-saving measure, is what you were pointing out.
That's my point, yes.
And if the city is looking to save costs on insurance, then we need to look at, as a city.
Yes.
Do, that has to be an option. It has to be something the city looks at, at least, to decide whether they want to do it or whether they don't want to do it. But I think what Ms. Warden and I are saying is, let's look at all the cost-saving options that are available, including if I work for the city and I'm on the city's insurance, and my husband works for a company that has their own insurance, he must take theirs as opposed to mine.
And some companies will actually give you a stipend to opt out, to hold your status coverage.
That's going to be a contract issue, though, with the respective bargaining units. It's a good discussion point in an effort to control future escalations in your healthcare benefit programs, but it's going to be a challenge in any bargaining unit negotiations because the employees for the city of Worcester have a very rich healthcare program. It's not even close to being market comparative today. It's very good, it's very strong, but it's a major benefit of working for the city of Worcester and in government in general. Civil servants have much the same type of situation, so maybe they make a little less on their salary or hourly wage, but their healthcare benefit program is a premium program for the workers within the bargaining, respective bargaining units.
I will say, ours is very similar to the other members of BORMA, who were a member of, you know, of the group. But to get back to Mike's question, since we started with BORMA in 2017, our average increase has been 4.4%, which is much lower than the industry so far. This has been, this will be the first year, this next year, we have a pretty significant increase, but that's because this last year, we, the last two years, I think, we've spent $1.50 for every dollar we put into the program. So they, they had, we had to have an adjustment. We're just one of the larger users. Andre's right, it's a little over 14% for medical plan one, which is the full family medical plan three, which is a more higher deductible, that's going up about 9%. Dental's five, so it'll be an average somewhere, depending on how many people take the different
Anything else? Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2023-26 passes. That brings us to 2023, ordinance 2023-27, and will be presented by Mr. Sanders. Hopefully you haven't lost your steam and vigor on the issues, but before I get back to, to you, I will have Ms. Hamilton to read the title.
Ordinance number 2023-27, an ordinance amending the annual appropriation ordinance.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know that necessarily we'll go round three with this. Like, like you say, it's, offer a specific blood panel for our first responders, which at this point will look for things that normal blood work does not inquire, and at this point, it'll be something that will give them a new baseline for them to, should they find anything that needs any type of special attention that they can deal with henceforth with their regular physician. And with that, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place ordinance 2023-27 on third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended. Mr. Sanders?
Uh, motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Any further discussion? Ms. Knappich?
Thank you. The only thing I wanted to point out is when we discussed this at the last meeting, this was a one-time expenditure, and then after that, the first responders would be able to use that as a baseline through their regular insurance, and I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record, that this would be a one-time expenditure and not an annual expenditure. Thank you.
We're using some sort of funds.
The opioid.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought, I, I thought I had mentioned in my previous.
Yes, I thought.
It's a one-time fund, but.
Well, there's so much going on, I got lost in the discussion.
It's a long-term fund, but one-time expenditure.
Right.
All right, Ms. Hamilton, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Our ordinance number 2023-27 passes. That brings us to resolution number 2023-68. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel. See, we get away from Mr. Sanders, who's very closed-lipped, and we get down the line, and Mr. Ansel's ordinances or resolutions get a little more wordy. So if he would please read the title of the resolution, I'd appreciate it.
Resolution number 2023-68, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the purchase of certain materials for the water treatment plant and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, this is an annual process because we need chemicals to treat our water and the water processes. It, the 200, or 648,000 is a budgeted item, and this authorize, this piece of legislation authorizes the Director of Administration to enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the purchase and delivery of chemicals for the treatment of our drinking water in the city. These chemicals are necessary, and we use them annually to ensure safe drinking water. There are four elements involved in this competitive bid and award. The carbon dioxide is used for the treatment process for reducing pH after softening and corrosion control, and that's going to be approximately $63,000. Lime is the largest expenditure, is used in the softening process to remove the hardness and improve water. Aesthetics, phosphates are added to the sequencer hardness through the filter and prevent plating of the filter media, that's $60,000. And finally, the sodium hyperchlorite is used in the treatment process for the disinfection and maintenance, maintaining bacteria-free water, a cost of $135,000. This will be competitively bid, it's not sole source, these are commodities in the marketplace, and this will allow the administration to commence that process, and we would like to pass this this evening so they can begin the competitive bidding process. So without further ado, I would motion to, or I would motion to adopt, Mr. President.
I think you have to.
Oh, yeah.
I know it's budgeted, but I think it's for next year. These are chemicals for next year, so.
Yes.
It's on second reading.
Stand corrected. Motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final reading this evening.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Ms. Hamilton, would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Any questions? I see Mr. Fritz came back again, just in case that someone had some additional questions that weren't asked last, last meeting. Ms. Knappich?
This isn't the current budget, right? This is an anticipated budget for 2024, correct?
Correct, which is why we couldn't pass it without suspending the rules. So all it is, is authorizing to go out for bid. If, if we get a bid that we like before the end of the year, then we would probably have to have a motion to adjust the appropriation, is that correct?
We can enter into a contract once.
No, not until 2024, until it's been budgeted.
Correct.
All right, that's what I wanted to clear.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
We can't enter into a contract until it's actually been.
This just authorizes us to advertise.
I understand that, but I think that sometimes the public questions when we authorize things on an upcoming.
But you can authorize the contract, you could sign in 2023 with delivery 2024.
As long as we have it in the budget for 2024.
And we'd, yes.
Yeah, and we haven't passed that yet.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Hamilton, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Resolution number 2023-68 passes. We have a second reading of resolution number 2023-70. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel. Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2023-70, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract to purchase replacement parts and improvements for the city's anaerobic digester system and biogas generator and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, this is a very important piece of legislation, and just as our previous discussion, this would allow the bidding process to commence because these are long lead time items, and it's really long overdue, but it is reflected in our appropriation, proposed appropriations for 2024. So that being noted, we're looking at a total expenditure of about $4,750,000. This is very, very critical. Most of the system currently is out of service because of unreparable failures. Some of the improvements are needed for safety of the operation. The improvements will allow the facility to begin receiving high-strength waste, we've deferred that, for tipping revenue and increased biogas production. So very, very important. The system in its current phase has the potential of generating about $500,000 in revenue, so it is a reasonable, a return on investment, but very, very critical in terms of getting this process initiated, so Mike and his team can begin to plan for the improvements. But this is just a request for a construction contract to the anaerobic digester and the digester equipment of the wastewater treatment facility. The project was presented to council in June of '22, and is part of the 10-year infrastructure strategic plan that is included in the 2023 budget. So the majority of these facilities and equipment were installed in 2012 with the digester upgrades, and they're now at the end of their useful life and, as noted, in significant need of repair. And the recent failures has exacerbated this problem with some of the system's component being moved to, needed replacement forward, and necessitate, and this is, necessitates a more comprehensive project upgrade. So the total expenditure is just under $5 million, and interestingly enough, this was budgeted in $2.2 million in 2022, $2.3 million in 2023, and including the $800,000 ARPA fund. So we do anticipate, as Mr. Montgomery highlighted, an additional 30% grant to help offset this expense, but it will be bond-funded about 50%, $800,000 in ARPA grant funding, and about $1.5 million in the 2024 capital plan. So being that this is a critical item, and we'd like to commence the process, I am going to recommend that we suspend the rules of council and move resolution 2023-70 to third and final reading this evening.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Knappich?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended, Mr. Ansel.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. I think I asked this on another piece of equipment. Most of these things are custom-made, aren't they?
Yes.
So that adds.
Very little of this that isn't custom-made.
Yeah, so that adds to the cost. It's not like buying a water meter from a supplier. Mr. Cavan?
Hey, I'm reading in here about receiving high-strength waste. Is there going to be any issue with the smells that we've incurred downtown in the past?
We're planning on only taking low-end high-strength, which would, they won't have to, so that it would not, it won't have to be a block to that.
Okay.
One thing I did want to point out, that in addition to creating income for the city, there are a lot of people in our geographic area who count on this digester to take their waste, and not being able to do that has increased their prices exponentially. I've talked to people who have relied on our digester in the past, and since it's been gone, or out, their costs have doubled. So this is a win-win for everyone. We are going to be able to make some money while being able to help people that use the digester save some money, so I, it just makes sense.
And we'll be able to generate power again, too?
That's probably next year.
Okay.
It's two, that's just the first generator, but then you generate, generate, so it's a couple years ago as well, as it was young.
Well, Ms. Hamilton, would you mind calling the roll on the motion to adopt, please?
Knappich?
Yes.
Cavan? Cavan.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Resolution number 2023-70 passes. This is a second reading of resolution number 2023-71. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel. Ms. Hamilton, please read the title, if you would, please.
Resolution number 2023-71. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into an agreement for the purchase of water meter replacements and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, this is an annual reoccurring expenditure. It will be included in the 2024 budget. We have a contract in place with the manufacturer, equipment supplier, Badger Water Meters. We conducted a thorough competitive review several years ago and selected them to be our single source, and every year we budget X number, about $100,000. This is for $110,000 for the upcoming year to replace the older meters currently in operation with new state-of-the-art, you know, telecommunications readers. So Badger is our supplier. We will not be competitively bidding this because of our contract and relationship with Badger, and again, it's something that we have to continue on in terms of replacement to maintain the connectivity and the efficiency of monitoring the water usage at the consumer level. So no surprises here. And that being noted, I would like to, motion to suspend the rules of council and move resolution 2023-71 to third and final reading this evening.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Warden. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Sanders.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Knappick.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. I didn't quite recognize your voice. I know, sometimes in this, the air in here, I sometimes have, yeah, it's dry. So Mr. Myers seconded the motion to adopt. Any further discussions? This is how we generate water, payments for water usage, so pretty important piece of legislation.
I do have a question. I'm just curious, since this is a non-bid contract, what's the rush? Just, I mean, is there concern that we're not going to be able to get the pieces when we need them, or?
There've been supply chain problems in the past, I'm sure that's, I hope that I can get that idea as we can order early for next year. There's been times that we've gone six, eight months without shipments, and that puts a little bit of a hitch on our program, so the idea is we did it out of bid, get the purchase order issued, and it was just part of the plan for next year.
It's really more of a forecasting type of strategy. Well, indicate what our demand is going to be.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not.
They can get them ordered in the pipeline.
No issue, I just.
Good question.
I assume that was the process, or what the thought was.
All right, Ms. Hamilton, seeing that there's nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Knappick.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Resolution number 2023-71 passes. Second reading of resolution number 2023-72. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel. Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2023-72. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into an agreement for the purchase of meter transmitting units and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours again.
Yes, this is the sister piece of legislation that marries the meter transmission units with the new volume readers, tabulators that we just talked about prior, and this was part of our specification that we went with the current meter, and Clara provides the meter transmission technology to put on the meters to allow the mobile reading of usage of water at the consumer level. This is just a purchase to upgrade and replace outdated units and technology, and it's something that we do every year on a, you know, kind of a progressive basis, and I'm sure in another 20 years, we'll be doing the whole process all over again. 15 years, 15 to 20 years. So it's that time, this is the tag piece, tag-team legislation piece for the new meters. This are the transmission units. So that being noted, I will motion to suspend the rules of council and move resolution 2023-72 to third and final reading this evening.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Ms. Hamilton, would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Ansel.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Knappick.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended, Mr. Ansel.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Yep, Mr. Cavan, yes. Seconded by Mr. Cavan. Anything further? Seeing nothing further, Ms. Hamilton, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Knappick.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Resolution number 2023-72 passes. We now will roll into new business with ordinance 2023-28. It'll be presented by Mr. Sanders. It's slated for three readings, and it's probably the biggest ordinance we pass every year. Before I get back to you, Mr. Sanders, I'll ask Ms. Hamilton to please read the title.
Ordinance number 2023-28. An ordinance appropriating from various funds to individual accounts for the current expenses and other expenditures for the City of Worcester for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2024, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we all have waited with bated breath for the last few months, knowing that this was coming our way, this is our budget appropriations for the year of 2024. I know we had a little bit of a preview of some information from the administration previously. Was there anything that you guys wanted to add beyond?
I think Scott's going to go first with the hospital budget.
The fourth, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Scott will go first with the hospital presentation, and Joe and I will.
That's fine. And the hospital's budget is already in here in section five.
That would be section, I believe, five.
Yeah.
Yeah, section five.
Yes, sir.
If any council has any questions or any clarifications over the next two weeks, please don't hesitate to let us know. We can definitely focus areas of the presentation on that.
I know council will vet this quite well. Just for those that might be listening, or assuming the newspaper still publishes something, the macro view, what's the increase in the budget for 2024 over 2023?
203%, 2% approximately. We are, we had a pretty amazing year as far as income tax receipts go, primarily though we set a record in the way of common net product taxes. I'm not in it. I don't budget based on anomalies, so I went normal averages and then went 3% off of normal product, but we're still going to see an increase. And part of that, though, I will say that in area of taxes, we're going to, we should see an increase because of the increased valuations. So, and I'll go back on Monday.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? Well, we'll have considered ordinance number 2023-28 having its first reading. I'm sure there'll be plenty of questions over the next couple of weeks. That brings us to ordinance 2023-29. It'll be presented by Mr. Reynolds. It is slated for three readings. Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title of the ordinance?
Ordinance number 2023-29. An ordinance amending Part 11 zoning of the codified ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio to rezone land C1 Office Institutional for property located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Bendon Drive and Noble Drive.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had our public hearing on this at the outset of the meeting. There's no urgency to this one. The applicant purchased the building without having this in place, so it's not like they're waiting to make a decision on, or to act on that, so I'll leave this on first reading.
All right. We'll consider ordinance number 2023-29 as having its first reading. We'll turn to resolution 2023-73. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel, and I think this is the first one that is budgeted for the 2023 calendar year, so it won't require suspension of the rules. But it does require me to turn once again and nicely ask Ms. Hamilton to please read the title.
Resolution number 2023-73. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the installation of a natural gas generator for the well S3 and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, this is a pretty unique failsafe initiative that's currently not in place, but this is to install a natural gas-fired backup electric generator for well S3 with automatic transfer switch in order to maintain a design production of water treatment plant during extended power outages. So this justification will ensure power maintenance through outage and maintaining system pressure and fire flow at design levels. There is, it is a budgeted item. It is a competitive bid situation. This is more of a commodity item, plug-and-play, to ensure power generation and capacity at well S3, and it is in the 23 budget, so we can approve this this evening and allow Mike to go out. I don't know if he's going to be able to get that generator before year-end. Is it on the, no? Yeah.
I'm thinking about the bid, so we can do it.
Good. So that being motion, I would motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cavan. Any questions?
Do we currently have a backup generator?
We have a plug and a portable generator that we can move out there, but the well is in the floodplain, and if we lose power because of flooding, we're going to have to do it. So this is permanent generator, not portable, and we run out of natural gas, which should be running.
Excellent, thank you.
Good question.
Contingency plan is in place, but it's not a very effective plan.
Well, if the power goes out, and the power goes out on your backup generator, you've got a problem.
Yeah.
Well, if it's in the floodplain, just getting the backup generator could be a problem, too.
Yes.
All right, I don't see anything further. Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Knappick.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Resolution number 2023-73 passes. Resolution number 2023-74 will be presented by Ms. Knappick. I like the title, chiller equipment. I don't know if that makes sense, or we should bring our popcorn, and it's like chiller theater. So anyways, before we get to Ms. Knappick, would you please read the title, Ms. Hamilton?
Resolution number 2023-74. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the installation of City Hall chiller equipment and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Knappick, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. This is something that is proposed to be in the budget for 2024. It's actually to cool City Hall, as all of us have been sitting here, and June have noticed that, you know, we have to wear tank tops and shorts because it's a little warm in here, and it's necessary, but since we don't have it budgeted until 2024, and since it's freezing outside right now, I'm going to leave this on first reading.
All right. We'll consider resolution number 2023-74 as having its first reading. Ordinance number 2023-30 will be presented by Mr. Sanders. It is slated for three readings. Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title?
Ordinance number 2023-30. An ordinance amending Chapter 1705.02 rate of tax for the codified, of the codified ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is related to the bed tax money from the standpoint of how, how we're actually going to, the percentage that we're going to use from the, for the city's portion of what we're giving them is oversight, and then the actual percentage that we'll utilize from the bed tax that will be actually giving back related to economic development. And the specifics of this is that we're going from 4% to 2% that will be received by the city for oversight of this program, and the remaining 98% will be utilized for promoting economic development. In light of the fact that we've had multiple conversations related to this throughout the year, I am going to motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappick. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Warden.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Knappick.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended. Mr. Sanders?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappick.
Everybody.
Any further discussion? This is just changing the allocation where the big portion that the cities used to keep is now being shoved over to being on the disbursement side for the qualifying applicants for bed tax monies to be used for economic development. I can't think of a better use of the bed tax than for economic development, and because of a number, and three of them of which are sitting here, programs have done wonderful job in bringing people to, into the city to spend their money and see what all the amenities we have to offer.
You know, that being noted, just for the public's reference, the referenced increases are sizable when you look at the prior year contributions on the attachment. As noted, everyone is going up significantly, the WEDC, Main Street, the Chamber, the Wayne County Conventioner Bureau, the WGC.
Mr. Ansel, what's the next piece of legislation?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It would be very confusing.
It was very confusing. They're so really official tonight.
This piece just is changing the percentages that we're going to, in terms of we're going to allocate.
I got you.
Well, I do see you're drinking the same water as Mr. Sanders is.
Yeah, it has a carryover to the next piece.
Yes, it does.
Mr. President, if I could point out the path, what would happen is the city would take 4% for admin fees, and then the remaining 96% is split 50/50. City would go to the general fund, 30%, 20% would go to the economic development fund. How did this resolution, or I'll say this ordinance, right now would just say 2% city, 98% goes to the economic development fund to run economy.
Significant.
Yes, so we'd consider it.
I'm glad to see it.
And in support of, I guess, in defense of Mr. Ansel, I will say that that spreadsheet does show that that 2% comes to $7,500, I think.
Yes.
So you can't pick that out, so that's an additional $7,500 that is going from the general fund to the economic development fund.
Right.
Well, if there's nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Warden.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Knappich.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Ordinance number 2023-30.
Now's the resolution that you can wax eloquently on when it gets to the discussion portion, but first I have to have Ms. Hamilton read the title and then let Mr. Sanders do his things. It is slated for three readings. Ms. Hamilton?
Resolution number 2023-75, a resolution authorizing agreements with various applicants for the use of economic development monies.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, we had had much discussion throughout the summer related to this topic. I see the decision, we had decided to look, to move to this, to make a change in terms of how we were dispersing our economic development monies. We have what we're calling a direct fund allocation, which is going to a combination of Main Street Worcester, the Wayne Economic Development Council, Worcester Area Chamber of Commerce, Wayne County Convention and Visitors Bureau, as well as the Worcester Growth Corp. That particular group there is utilizing roughly 76%, almost 77% of the 98% that we're utilizing for economic developments. There's then a remaining 23.05%, which will be split into two pieces. Part of that will be nearly $60,000 in competitive grants and another $25,000 that will be utilized for direct fund projects, which specifically will be utilized for facade improvements on our properties down in downtown. Again, we had, we, we as council had basically asked for this. Like you say, it took Finance Committee a few weeks to hash through it. I think everybody at this point, hopefully everybody in the economic end of this is all happy with, or we finally settled out on these numbers. And ultimately, at this point, you know, I think we, I think we get a fantastic return on our investment in terms of what we see back from our economic partners in the community, and just appreciate the hard work that they put into this because, again, we do see good returns. So with that, I'm going to motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Um...
Whoever. I don't think this matters.
I heard Ms. Knappich first, unfortunately. You sit on my side of my bed here, sorry.
I'll yell louder next time.
Yes. We need, we need like Jeopardy lights, you know? Ms. Knappich has seconded. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Knappich.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Resolution, or the motion to suspend the rules has passed. Do you have another motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any further questions? I see the Chamber, Main Street, and the county here, and we get wonderful returns from all three organizations. So thank you for doing such a great job, and of course, we just recently had Window Wonderland, and I think for the first time, my landlord finally did, did, got embarrassed enough to do something with the window, and it says, "Fa la 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 la." Obviously, Your Honor, it was elf defense, so take a look at that.
Fa la la la. It was law. So that was great.
Mr. Ansel, yes, Mr. Ansel.
Yes, I would just like to compliment the Finance Committee and the administration for their collaboration in acknowledging and reinforcing our commitment to economic growth through the principal parties involved and the success that you generate for our city and the revenues that you bring in to our region. So it really is a compliment on a job well done, so keep up the great work, and thank you for making this perhaps long overdue change, and it's something that is a high, high return on the investment, and it all speaks about the success and the unity and the collaboration at your level with the joint bed tax application. Hopefully, that program will remain intact, and you continue to work together to achieve the resounding results that you've continued to achieve over the last 20 years for our community. So thank you, and keep up the great work.
Thank you. The other thing, I think we're going to be looking to the economic development partner at the administration, and Jonathan Malley probably be part of this, would be a simplified application for our direct funded partners, so something they can sign that basically says they'll use it for economic purpose. I know our law department reviewed that and gave everybody a memo. They can't use it for promotion of alcohol or politics, so we just have that probably in the application so that that can be, we can be in compliance and make sure we're covering our bases there. So that, and we discussed whether we might have them come every couple of years to just give council an update on what they're doing and how things are going, so we can talk about that at a later date as well. And then a separate application for the competitive grants, I would expect that one to be a little bit more detailed because they're probably people we've not been familiar with their programs, so we will need an application for that so that that could be reviewed by council and make those awards, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. President, if I could just add again, congratulations to administration for working out a compromise solution. I think everybody in this room recognizes that this has been a hot topic during, for a whole year, since the time the last budget was rolled out, and appreciate everybody's patience while we worked through this process, and we got a little bit of both from the standpoint of the administration was looking to have some competitive opportunities for people to come and apply beyond our, the standard partners, and we've got that now, but at the same time, we did it with basically holding the traditional partners harmless. So again, I think it's a win-win for the community. And I'm sorry, Finance certainly had a hint on this as well, so I need to acknowledge your role.
Good job.
Well, thanks, everyone. With that, would you please call the, or would you, yeah, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Knappich.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
We've got explicit warning on our...
Yeah, we have to beat that.
Resolution number 2023-75 passes. That brings us to resolution 2023-76. It will be presented by Mr. Ansel. It is budgeted, so will not require suspension of the rules. Ms., Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2023-76, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to contract with Seifert Technology for new processors for remote sites and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, I would first like to say that being returned to council, I've never seen so much public infrastructure activity. My prior 15 years serving on councils, we have this year. So Mike, you've certainly brought a new enthusiasm and vision to our public utilities, and this is another piece this evening where we're going to be upgrading seven remote sites to new high-technology processing capabilities. This project will include work to update remote sites, and I'll highlight those with new processors in advance of the new fiber optic network communication, you know, capabilities that will be finalized here probably by mid-next year, I would assume. The existing processors, and I don't know how they've lasted this long, are 15 to 20 years old and have far exceeded their useful life design of five to 10 years. The seven remote sites include, again, high-volume sites, the North Well Field, wells S1, S2, and S3, the Madison Booster Station, Mechanicsburg Booster Station, and Buckeye Booster Station. So that is, those are high-volume processing facilities that now will be tied into fiber optics. This is a competitor, a sole source with Seifert Technology. They have a understanding of our requirements, and the standard Allen Bradley processors are more of a shelf item, but Seifert Technology will provide the integration. It will be budgeted, and the total estimate for the upgrade is $75,000. So with that, as we advance technology and replace outdated technology, I would motion to suspend the rules and move resolution 20...
Budgeted.
It's not... Okay, motion to adopt, Mr. President.
All right, motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further comments or discussion? Seems pretty straightforward. Ms. Hamilton, would you call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Reynolds.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Knappich.
Yes.
Resolution number 2023-76 passes. Our final piece of legislation tonight is resolution 2023-77. Fortunately, we end on a short note for you. It'll be presented by Mr. Cavan. It's slated for three readings. Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2023-77, a resolution to adopt the 2023 Wayne County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Mr. Cavan, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a piece of legislation asking to accept the FEMA-required five-year update to our emergency preparedness plan. Have not had a chance to speak with Chief Salee, but I do know that, I believe Joel was very familiar with it. We've passed this before. Would you be able to speak to that for us?
Yeah, it's something that's required EMA, Wayne County EMA does it every five years. We did this back in 2018 was the last time we did it, and it also allows us to apply for funding when funding isn't available. And it does hinge on that as well. We do have to comply.
Thanks for that. Most other things. I, again, I think we've gone through this before, but I haven't had a chance to talk with Chief Salee, but because it's a hazard mitigation plan, it's been thoroughly vetted, it seems to me, I would go ahead and place this on third and final reading.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Cavan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Cavan.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Knappich.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended. I look to you again, Mr. Cavan.
I would place, I would like to place resolution number 2023-76 on third and final reading. I would like to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cavan? Not Ms. Cavan, geez. By Ms. Warden.
Wow.
It's like a dream.
We had no idea.
Don't tell Mindy.
I don't think we'll go to the bar before the meetings anymore. Confusing night.
Second by Ms. Warden. Any discussion? I assume there ain't much we can negotiate with this. Mr. Montgomery?
Yeah, we have a...
I said, I don't think there's much we can negotiate with the county on this.
No, it's a county-wide plan, so they have it. If we don't approve it, we just wouldn't be able to get the funding that we have.
Right. Okay.
I just have a quick question. It's November 20th, 2023, and we're adapting a hazardous plan for 2023 for the next five years. Is there a reason why we didn't have this before 2023?
We did.
And did the last plan continue to cover us for 2023? It seems to me that effective government is, you make the plan before the year you're supposed to implement it.
I couldn't speak to the specifics of that. That's one thing that Barry reveals before we do the ball in the meetings that they had in the county, all the townships. Really, my guess might be is, it's all the townships and all the villages and all the entities or the counties, so I'm guessing that might be a little bit complicated earlier.
Well, I would highly recommend they get started earlier next time, so we're not passing the hazardous, the hazardous plan for 2023 at the end of 2023. That was my only comment.
Everyone grinds slowly a lot of times, doesn't it?
Start earlier. If you want to get to school on time, start earlier.
Yep. Anyone have anything else they'd like to add? Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Cavan.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Knappich.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-77 passes. We now have a miscellaneous portion. We've had, we have Ms. Linda Smith signed up to speak, so if you would, and she passed out some literature tonight for the severe weather shelter, so. I know it's, we know who you are, but it's a formality. Would you state your name and address, please?
I'm Linda Smith. I live at 3108 Bayberry Cove in Worcester. I'm representing the Worcester Homeless Task Force, as you all know. During the past two winters, the Task Force has been working closely with the Wayne County Housing Coalition to provide and enhance a safe, warm space for the most vulnerable members of our community to be sheltered and protected during the winter months. Earlier this year, the Task Force asked for and received authorization from the Wayne County Housing Coalition to assume full responsibility to operate the shelter during the coming winter. Although the shelter will continue to be housed at the Salvation Army Gymnasium, the service will be under the direction of a new LLC known as Homeward Bound, which is an ongoing project of the Task Force. During the past eight months, the Task Force has been working with, working to organize a separate board and recruiting and preparing paid staff to oversee and operate the shelter. Beginning December 1, it will be, there will be one or more staff people available any time the shelter is open. In addition, the Task Force has been actively recruiting and training community volunteers and college students to assist the staff with registrat- to assist the staff with registration and welcoming duties when the residents come in for the evening. Also, 12 local churches have accepted our invitation to provide hot meals for the guests at 6:30 each evening. We're truly grateful for their commitment and support for this service. However, even with all this volunteer and in-kind assistance, it's estimated it's going to cost about $350 per night for salary supplies and equipment needed to safely maintain the service. Therefore, throughout the winter, we'll be continually soliciting the community for private donations from our government, social services, agencies, civic organizations, and so forth to help offset the cost of that. And we want to thank all of you for your continued support of this service. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith, and have a nice Thanksgiving and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the council portion of miscellaneous. We'll start out with Mr. Reynolds and congratulations on your election.
Thank you. I just will say, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Think I'll put a little plug in for Thanksgiving. I think it gets squeezed out between all the hoopla over Halloween. And the Christmas season has already begun. We're somewhat complicit with Winter Wonderland having happened already. But I think Thanksgiving is a kind of an underrated holiday and we have so much to be thankful for. And I hope everybody has a safe travels for those that are traveling and a good holiday.
Thank you. Ms. Knappich.
I just want to reiterate, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Hope you're safe if you're traveling. Get to your destinations and back home safely. And I want to encourage people to definitely donate to the Homeward Bound of Worcester and Wayne County for the homeless shelter, the emergency shelter. No matter what you think of homeless people, and I make no judgment, we don't let people freeze, no matter what their circumstances, nor do we let them starve in Wayne County, Ohio. So if you have any additional resources, I would encourage you to put those in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cavan.
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Mr. Myers.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Mr. Sanders.
As Mr. Dordia had said earlier, and I just want to remind everybody that we will be having a Finance Committee meeting starting at 5:30 on December 4.
Okay, there'll be no, I'm sure.
Discuss the lion's share of our 2024 budget.
I know, I'm not, I'm not only sure, I know Ms. Hamilton will send a reminder out for all of us.
She actually already has, but it's just reiterated.
Yeah, and she'll probably remind us again, so.
Sure.
A lot can happen in a couple of weeks, you know?
I know. I know.
Mr. Ansel.
Have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Be thankful, everyone.
And Ms. Warden will give you the last word.
Thank you. Thank you to the, especially the Finance Department, but all of the members of the administration for all your hard work on putting the budget together for us. It'll definitely be some exciting reading over the coming weeks. And I wanted to congratulate Mr. Ansel on spending almost $6 million this evening.
He allocated.
There we go. And, and also to President Biden Dyke for, you know, having the opportunity to vote for the second time in your tenure as president of this body.
Yeah, I prefer not, but.
Right?
Such as like, that's what I get paid the big bucks for, I guess, right?
Well, that's all I have. A happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. President.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Ansel is our second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Myers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or adjourn.